Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the co-star, the official newspaper of the Borough of Belmar and the Asbury Park Press on September 28th, 2020. And notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. This meeting is being brought to you through Zoom and it'll run like any other regular council meeting. You will still be able to comment during the public comment sessions. When the time comes, you will click on the raise hand button. Or if you are attending via telephone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. We will call on you one at a time. And then when you go to speak, please remember to state your name and address first. Thank you.
Thank you, April. If everybody could join me in saluting the flag of our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. If I could just have a moment of silence for our military, their families, our first responders and all the healthcare workers that are dealing with this pandemic. Thank you.
The only thing I can think is that Jim might be at a housing authority meeting. I think those kind of.
Oh, right.
Yeah, I think he said he was going to be a little late. So did Pat Wong says she's going to be a little bit late. But we'll start with our workshop meeting. I just have two things. One of the things I want to talk about is I want to thank our business administrator, Ed Kirshenbaum, our financial team and all of our department heads. You can see on tonight's agenda, we got 480,000 for the, from the CARES Act for all the extra money that was spent this summer. So, and, and they did a really outstanding job of keeping track of everything that was spent and, and what we applied for, we got. So I really want to thank them. They did a lot of hard work this summer to make sure everything was on track. And everything that we had to do, they kept in touch with the county to make sure we could get it. So, and I, and I really want to thank them. 480,000 is, is nice to get back after all the money we spent for everything that happened during this pandemic. And the other thing I have is, I don't know if everybody went through the audit. One of the things that the council is going to have to really take a look at before the next audit. Back in 2011, the streetlights on Main Street from 10th Avenue South were bonded and the way that was supposed to be paid was all the property owners along Main Street were supposed to be assessed. Going through this year's audit, well, we knew it last year too, but going through this year's audit, we have to actually do something with that. Either we have to, we're going to have to absorb the cost as a barrel or we're going to have to go out and assess each one of the properties. The problem is, is that it happened in 2010, 2011. Nothing was done with it and it's still on our books and resolutions that were passed. So, and, and money was taken out. So, but the problem is, is that a lot of properties sold. The new properties don't, don't know anything about it, but that's something that the council is going to have to talk about and come up with some type of resolution, whether we assess the properties or we're going to have to absorb the cost before the next audit. So.
Are they on, are they currently on short-term bonding right now?
I think it was, I think it was paid for. So, you know, I have to check what our financial team to see if, if it was paid for, we're paying it down or somehow the borough was absorbing the cost. But before, before the next audit, somehow we have to clean that up. Whether we're going to absorb the cost or we're going to go out and assess all the property owners, like the ordinance. I think it was an ordinance that, that, that went out for the bonding. So. It's the same thing with the sidewalk assessment. We're working on that to bring that to a head. And I think we finally worked it out with Mazur and the engineers to bring that to a head. And we're going to have to have a separate meeting with all the property owners that are involved and let them know what they have to pay and work that out. But the, the lighting assessment was never done. So, but before the next audit, we have to do that. So if anybody's got any questions on that.
My only question is, is it an either or? Either we absorb all the cost or we put all the cost on the properties? Can we split it somehow? Do some kind of split that way?
Well, yeah, that's something we're going to have to talk about and figure out where we're at with it. And so I know when we went through the, the, the audit, that's every, everything else in the audit is being straightened out. That's one of the areas where the council is going to have to make a decision on how we handle that. So, but we'll, we'll talk about that. We have a couple of months before the next audit and we have to make sure that that's cleaned up. So whatever we decide that we're going to do. The only other thing that I have for workshop, I don't know if anybody has been over to Dempsey Park. We were able to get the basketball courts resurfaced, re-lined, and we're able to get it done at no cost to taxpayers. And during the process, we had the people that were doing it give us a, a price on the tennis courts. So, to do the pickleball courts, resurface it and do everything, it's about $42,000. So we're going to work on trying to get that money to do that. But we were able to get the basketball courts done for free. So hopefully we could work on that and do the same, get the same. Yeah, they were all, the basketball courts were all relined, all set. And then it's 42,000 to do the, the tennis court. So that, that's what we'll be working on to try to get that. Get the pickleball courts in there, have like two, two tennis courts, two pickleball courts. So we'll be working on that, but we just got all the prices on that. But I think that's all I have for workshop. If anybody else has anything that they want.
I had one thing, Mr. Mayor. I had one thing. It's a week from Saturday is Halloween. And I can't tell you how excited I am because it seems like for the first time in a long time, the kids are going to try to be able to do something that seems normal, but it's still not normal. And I was going to ask the chief if she would comment about how we're going to be safe, how we're going to keep our kids safe trick or treating this year.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Couple of weeks ago, we posted on our PD Facebook page as well as belmar.com, I'm sorry, Belmar Facebook page. The guidance that was given out by New Jersey Department of Health. Their public health recommendations is of course that everybody's social distance, wear a mask that covers your mouth and nose as well as hand hygiene. They're not recommending that you just use a costume mask. It's not safe that the children should wear a mask to or over. They should have a mask on underneath that. As far as while they're trick or treating, for those who do plan to trick or treat, you should stay in small groups that are your household members, social distance from any other groups that are in the area. And just, you know, practice the social distancing and that way. As far as those who are going to be putting out treats, there was three different options. One was to limit your exposure. If they're coming to your door, make sure that you have a mask on and that you're washing your hands frequently. Another option was to leave the treats in a bowl on your front porch that is accessible to where you are restricting yourself from contact with any of the trick or treaters. And the best option that was given by the health department was to arrange individually packaged treats on your front porch or in an area that is accessible. Other than that, you know, just practice the social distancing. If you're in your groups, once it starts to get dark, hopefully the parents will have a flashlight or the kids can have some flashlights. So that the, the traffic in town will be able to see the pedestrians as they're crossing the streets. And I hope that everybody has a safe and healthy and fun Halloween.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
I just want to bring up one other thing while we're in workshop. On one of the resolutions tonight is an amendment to the 10th Avenue freeze-out concession. The only thing we're, we're making amendment on that instead of making them pay the full amount right at the beginning of the year, they asked us if they could pay monthly. It's the same, same amount of money, but because of the pandemic and all the issues that we're having with that, we, if we pass this resolution, we're agreeing to let them pay monthly instead of just one, one installment at the beginning of the year. And I think that's all I have to bring up. If anybody else has anything. All right.
Yeah, was it monthly or quarterly?
I think it was.
No, I think it's.
Quarterly, quarterly. Yes, yes, yes. My mistake. Yeah, quarterly. So that, that's the only change that we're making on that, if it's agreed to. All right. April, do we have any petitions?
No, we do not.
Okay, moving on to approval of the minutes of October 6th.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 6th meeting?
Second.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carvelli?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifor?
Yes. Reports of council. Councilman Carvelli?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Harvard Commission meeting, which was scheduled for last Tuesday, that was actually canceled for lack of quorum. I'm not sure when the next one is. I'm assuming early November. Last night, there was a planning board meeting. We actually reviewed and approved. We don't actually approve the ordinance, but we, we reviewed and accepted the proposal of the ordinance for 2020-37, which was to add a informal review process. I think we'll be voting on that tonight. And the gist of this was to prevent taxpayers from footing the bill for professionals review of development projects that may not come to fruition. So obviously anything we can do to defer those costs is, is something that, that we want to do. So planning board passed that. The only other thing, and I guess it's more of a question, and maybe I should have brought it up during workshop was, did we have a pop-up car meet since the last meeting?
I think it was like a half of one. It was never advertised, but some, it seemed like some of the cars showed up. Chief Scott, maybe you can comment on that.
Can you just give us the rundown?
Yes, it was about 30 or 40 vehicles rolled into town. I was advised by patrols. It's about 7:00 PM. I believe it was on Monday. And we didn't have any issues with it. We advised and got in touch with surrounding towns as well as the sheriff's department, who were able to send some of their patrols over to the area, but there were no issues with it. Again, we didn't know about it. I was informed by the patrols that were on that evening that it was about 30 to 40 vehicles that came into town.
Now, as we go into like the winter months, are these things less likely?
I would hope so. I'm really, I, I can't answer that again. I mean, they're, they're advertising it on social media. Sometimes they're, they're putting them on there, you know, an hour before they're showing up. I would think that, you know, I wouldn't want to be standing out on Ocean Avenue in the dead of winter. So I'm hoping that they don't want to as well.
Great. Yeah, I think I, the, the first couple of times that, that we had them, there was like a lot of blowback and complaints from residents. And I, I haven't heard that about this one. So I'm sure that it sounds like the police officers, you know, were able to deal with it effectively. So, thank you. Yeah, I don't have anything else. That's, that would be my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Brennan?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three things. First, I'm going to talk again about Jackie Ramirez, my young former student who has stage four cancer. I've mentioned it the last couple of meetings. They had a big fundraiser for her this past weekend at Bar A. Their GoFundMe is doing okay. They have, but they have a hundred thousand dollar goal. And they haven't reached that yet. The treatment that they're looking to get for her is very expensive because she's really sick. So again, you can go to GoFundMe, help Jackie beat stage four cancer. Ayuda para Jackie. And, and I want to thank the people that got in touch with me after last meeting. I was, got a couple of emails from people looking for more information about more they could, they could do. And it was really very encouraging that people wanted to reach out and see what they could do to help this really sweet kid and a great family with some really bad luck. Right. A second thing of the environmental commission has finished revising the environmental resource source inventory. They, it's only taken a couple of years, but that's kind of how it goes. They're actually in the process of getting it printed as we speak. So hopefully at our next meeting, I'll actually have a copy. And the other council members and, and the mayor and the business administrator and everybody will have their own copy. They've been working really, really hard on this. The last thing I wanted to mention, I was contacted by a couple of residents who had looked at the agenda for tonight and they had some concerns about an ordinance that's on for first reading, 2020-188. I was wondering if Mr. Kirshenbaum could just speak to that about why are we doing this to like regulate public comment during our meetings?
Our clerk, April Claudio, was notified by the state to have this in place and that's why we're doing it.
Oh, so it's something from the state. You know, one of the things I noticed about this is rather than limit comment in any way, it basically codifies what we're already doing. And one of the things they've added is the ability to submit questions prior to the meeting in writing or via email. I mean, you know, for people who just somehow, they aren't going to be able to sit through the Zoom meeting. They have some other, something else, but they want their question read into the record. Actually, in a way, this actually increases the opportunity for the public to comment. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Just to reiterate, Council President, Mr. Kirshenbaum was correct. This was mandated, I'm going to say, two to three weeks ago. Everyone, every town is, every public body, including a planning boards and zoning boards are required to adopt the resolution like this. Belmar has been following, we, we were ahead of the curve with the exception of this now, as you just indicated. Emails, I think 24 hours before the meeting, I see.
All right, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. This coming Saturday, October 24th, the Monmouth County is setting up paper shredding in our Belmar Recycling Center. So if anybody needs any kind of documents shredded or anything like that, they're welcome. It's from nine to one. It's in our recycling center. So please take advantage of that. And the other thing that we have also on October 24th, if you have any kind of prescription medications that you don't need or anything that, that is in your medicine cabinet that you think should be destroyed. The police department is taking back all those, any kind of prescription drugs that are sitting around to make sure that nobody else gets their hands on them. Chief, maybe you could just say a few words on that.
That takes place, I believe, every six months. And we've been working with the DEA, coordinating with them. We'll have an officer at our headquarters on Saturday to collect the prescriptions. If it's anything, you know, that is over the counter, such as like aspirin or something like that, we can take it. But it's more for the, the medications that are prescribed that you get from your doctors in order to get rid of them if you don't want them in your, in your house anymore. But we will have somebody there at headquarters. I believe it's 10 to two was the time. Collecting those and distributing, getting rid of them. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. And the only other thing I have is Sal Marchese. He was president of the Belmar Business Partners and he is on our planning board. I just want to wish him all the best. He was diagnosed with stage four cancer. And we want to wish him all the best. He did a lot for our town. And that's all I have. So we're going to move on to public session for any of the resolution items.
If anyone from the public would like to comment on any of the resolutions only, please click the raise hand button or dial star nine on your phone. It needs to be called on.
Hi, this is Jerry Buckefusco, 409 50th Avenue, Belmar.
Hi, how are you?
Okay. Um, I just have a few, a few comments. Number one, as I do, I did in the last meeting and probably the meeting before that, I just want to comment that I think the consent agenda is being not utilized properly. It's supposed to be for only routine items. I understand that it's used for expediency, but that's not the intent of the ordinance. But, um, you know, I guess I'll keep doing that for every meeting until it finally, you know, is utilized properly. Second of all, um, the audit, I'm wondering when that will be posted on the website? Because I looked today, but I already put in an Oprah request, so I'm sure I'll be getting it fairly soon.
They're going to be posted tomorrow as soon as we approve it.
Okay, that's good. The other thing I was regarding the, the audit and the streetlight issue. I know there's going to have to be some discussion about that and how you're going to handle that. That that discussion is done in public so that all the residents can, can hear what, you know, the pros and cons are. And maybe perhaps include someone from the finance department to discuss the implications of, you know, prior bond ordinances and whatever. Another question I have, but I, I don't, not really looking for an answer tonight, but I don't understand why that's coming up now. When it's been from 2010, it probably was in the last audit, I would think, especially since the same auditor did that last audit.
But maybe. Brought it to our attention last audit and we're, it's just one of those things that we didn't act on it to try to figure out what was going on. But the prior audits before this administration, it never showed up in any of the audits. So we don't know why it didn't, but it's in our audit and we have to straighten it out before our next audit.
Yeah, that's, that is curious because I think Mr. Allison's firm did those prior audits for a few years before your administration.
No, they did not. Mr. Allison was hired for my administration. It was a different auditor.
Okay. The third thing is the, the 480,000 additional revenue. Again, I hope that's going to be used to either reduce taxes or pay down our debt. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay.
Wouldn't that 480,000 go to offset expenditures that were already?
Yes, that's what, that's exactly what it's for. It's, it's for money that we already spent that we're getting reimbursed for.
Right. Yeah, that's what I would have thought. Jerry, can you please possibly just address Mr. Buckefusco's concern about the consent agenda? Sounds like he's concerned that we're not using it in the proper way. And he said that he's going to come on in every meeting, so we might as well just put it to bed right now.
Well, I hope we can put it to bed. The consent agenda, in my opinion, is being utilized properly. If any member of the council wants something off of that consent agenda to discuss it directly or feel that have to be accentuated for some reason. I think April gives that notification before, before we take the vote of the consent agenda. So it's being utilized properly. There's no question about it. If, if there are things that shouldn't be on the consent agenda, that should be discussed and voted on separately. Any member on the governing body has the right to, to ask for that to happen and it will happen.
I've done this several times. Several times.
Well, we know this, right? Because like when liquor licenses, right? Those just get pulled out automatically because we know that Tom's not going to vote on them. So. And if, and if they were in there, we could make the request to remove that.
Yeah. And if anyone, any one of the governing body feels that they're going to vote no on something for some reason, maybe they want to take that one off so that it can be discussed more fully and then voted on. So it's not an issue at all.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dest. Okay. Anybody else on consent agenda? April?
So before you move to approving these, can, can I just, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Thanks. So on, on 188, the public comments made during the remote meeting. So there's the ability in there for people to email in within 24 hours of the meeting, questions that they would like either addressed or asked to the council. Is that something that is only applicable to remote meetings?
I believe it is, Tom. I'm a councilman. I'll check that to be sure. I'm pretty sure that is the case.
And, and that's fine. And I, I think that possibly when we do go back to in-person meetings, that that would be something that we should consider for in-person meetings as well. And again, I think there's something in there about consolidating repetitious meetings or questions or things like that. So if that's something that we can implement for in-person meetings as well, I think that's something we should consider.
I'll look at that in the morning and I'll speak with Ms. Claudio and Mr. Kirshenbaum and we'll get it, we'll get you the answer.
All right. Great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. April, wait a minute. We got one more, I think. Si? Good, how are you?
I, right, my Fifth Avenue, Belmar. On the, on the topic of the, you know, the, the, with this new policy that the state imposed with respect to meetings, who is the monitor who determines whether or not, you know, someone is, you know, I don't know, being abusive or, or at a line? I mean, who, who is that person?
Well, Si, you know, I, I try to let as many people speak and, and I try not to put a time limit on anything. So I don't know if it would be me, but I don't, when I run my meetings, I don't really like to cut anybody off. So if anybody has something to say or speak about, I will make sure that they are, they have appropriate amount of time.
I mean, I'm very happy to hear that this is like a state imposed thing. And I'm happy to hear that it wasn't a town imposed thing. Because I think that for all practical purposes, the council meetings have been very civil.
Yeah, I, I tried to run them that way and I try to, you know, I have, I do not want to cut anybody off. If they have something to say to the council, I, I really want them to say, you know, I mean, I think we have a five-minute timely limit on the books, but I won't go by that. You know, if somebody has things that they want to talk about in Belmar, we absolutely want to hear them.
I just think it was a little ambiguous when the town, when the state, you know, puts this, you know, in effect. But it doesn't say ultimately who the monitor is going to be. And I just want to make sure that has been the case. You know, that, you know, the, the citizens of the community has been able to speak freely. And you've allowed that to happen. And I just want to ensure that that's going to continue.
It will, Si. Under my administration, it will.
All right, great. Super. Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Can I have a motion to close the public session?
Second.
And I have a motion to approve the resolutions as listed on the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wong? You're on.
Yes.
Mayor Walsifor?
Yes.
Now we have ordinances. We have first reading and introduction of ordinance 2020-38. This is an ordinance amending chapter 11 and chapter 2 regarding personnel and administration. Do we have a motion to offer for first reading?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan?
I had a question. Am I too late?
Nope.
No, go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. Sorry I was late, but traffic coming from Philly and there was a horrendous accident on one ninety-five. I don't think people made it. Um, under, under this, uh, under recreation park, parks were taken out of recreation. Um, any reason?
This, this is an ordinance uh, that we worked out with the, the people from civil service to straighten out all of our personnel. And uh, under all the service, civil service rules and regulations, the, these are the, the different. Departments that, that we have to put in place to put, put our town back into place. But uh, Administrator Kirshenbaum was working diligently on this, so maybe he could just answer, answer the question of why parks and recreations were taken out.
Yeah, it all falls under, in nineteen ninety-one, we only had, I believe, April five.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
No.
Very low.
Yeah, I think you're.
Very low.
How about now?
Yeah.
Nineteen ninety-one was the last ordinance, uh, this has been changed to reflect the departments, we only had about um, four or five.
Ed, I don't think nobody could hear you.
Yeah, something wrong with the wire on those headphones, I think.
Yeah.
Maybe you gotta unplug. Still can't hear you.
How about now?
No.
It's fucked with the wire, the, the mic and it came back on.
Yeah.
Just shout it.
Just, just unplug it, you'll be, you'll be better off.
Be fun to plug here. Marshall, where are you?
Ed, I know it's very rare that people say that they can't hear you.
Now we can hear you.
How about now?
No.
Okay, hold on a second. You should be able to go back to the computer mic. How about now?
Yes.
So I gotta turn up my volume because I can't hear anything.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Only five departments, I believe, we have.
How about Mark and April, I think you need to mute yourselves so that.
You got to fix your camera too. Put the screen closer to you.
I'll mute it.
Mark is. There you go.
How about now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you can't see me, okay. Nineteen ninety-one was the last time we had this ordinance, we changed it, there were five departments and they were consulting with our, with our consultant from civil service. This streamlines and tries to right the wrongs of all the personnel that we've had since nineteen ninety-one. And it uh, streamlines the uh, departments, so if you're looking at. I'm just trying to find Councilwoman Juan, what you're talking about. Um, parks and recreation, recreation department, it comes under. A separate one, and then all these other departments. Um, Department of Public Works will cover the parks. As well as we have our beach utility, our buildings and grounds, our water and sewer. Covers specifically a lot of the areas in need, so it really doesn't take parks out, parks still falls under the Department of Public Works. But recreation, uh, with our recreation director is a separate department, uh, but he didn't oversee the parks. That's was, that was buildings and grounds of the public works, if that explains it. So it fine tunes what discipline of government handles, what aspect of uh, what we have here in departments. Does that make sense?
Okay, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan, you voted yes?
Yes.
Okay, and then Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Councilman Carvelli, did I get you?
No, but yes.
Got where we left off. All right, so next is uh, first reading and introduction of ordinance two thousand twenty thirty-nine. This is an ordinance amending chapter twenty-eight. Um, you recall, I think it was last year, we did an amendment to. The ordinance to remove bonfires and um, somehow along the way, this section regarding open burning. Was removed and it shouldn't have been, so we are adding it back in. So can I have a motion to offer this for first reading and introduction?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Uh, next is ordinance two thousand twenty thirty-five. This is an ordinance amending chapter thirty-one regarding invasive species. The Shade Tree Commission actually reviewed the ordinance, made several recommendations, which we've incorporated. Because of the amount of changes, we have to reintroduce it. So can I have a motion to offer for first reading?
I'll make the motion. There you go.
Councilman Carvelli? Councilwoman Juan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Next we have a second reading and public hearing on ordinance two thousand twenty thirty-six. This is an ordinance um, amending chapter twenty-six regarding animal house. If anyone from the public would like to speak on this ordinance, please click the raise hand button or dial star nine. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Jerry Buckafusko, four oh nine fifty Avenue, Belmar. Um, I'd just like to thank Mr. Dusty for incorporating. The two changes that we discussed about at the last meeting. I think it's a, a fine ordinance now. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir, thank you.
Jerry, do we have to vote on amended ordinance or just those two quick changes were fine?
Well, mayor, this is second reading, you could just vote on, vote on the ordinance as amended and uh, it'll be fine.
Okay.
I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then a motion to adopt ordinance two thousand twenty thirty-six as amended?
I'll make that motion. There you go, second.
Hey, Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
And last is second reading and public hearing on ordinance two thousand twenty thirty-seven. This is an ordinance amending section forty regarding fees. If anyone from the public wants to comment on this ordinance, please click the raise hand button. All right, seeing none, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
The second?
Second.
All in favor? And a motion to adopt ordinance two thousand twenty thirty-seven?
Motion.
Second, second? Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes. Okay, public session. If anybody has any comments. Linda, go ahead.
Linda Sharkus, Fourth Avenue. I have two questions. I didn't see any announcement on who's replacing Mike Campbell as head of DPW. Would somebody care to comment on that?
We're gonna be going out for a search, but we had to straighten out some of the departments and, and see where, exactly where we're going with that. But we, we, we will be going out on a search for that.
Okay, so internal candidate uh, isn't going to be promoted into the position?
Well, possibly could be, but um, uh, they can apply.
Okay, second comment I'd like to make, in, in light of the two incidences that I would consider to be. Personnel issues, I would highly recommend bringing in a human resources person. So you have somebody who is not, who a person isn't directly reporting to. Overseeing their general employment issues. I think both situations that we encountered with Sal's, Sinsele and with Colton Hines. Were totally uncalled for, and I would like to think with the money we're going to save by um. Mr. Campbell resigning, that we should be able to either have shared services or bring somebody in part-time. To help us out, so the people and these employees could have a fair shot at being able to speak their mind without any retribution.
That, that's what we have department heads for, um, and I, I really can't comment too much on it, it's all personnel matter. But uh, you know, that, that's, department heads have to be in charge of the departments. And if they're not, that, that's, you know, we'll replace them, but Mike Campbell did not resign or retire.
Okay, so first of all, in companies, department heads are responsible for their people. But there's a third party to whom they could come and issue complaints or concerns without having problems. Nobody who's a, a direct boss is the one who does the hiring and typically the hiring and firing in an organization as large as ours. With a hundred.
Well, we do, we do have, we do have that, and they have their, they have their union reps to go to, and we also do have that. So if there's issues, they could come and they could discuss. Now, uh, the two people you're talking about, we can't not talk about, it's all personnel issues, so.
Anyway, that's my recommendation. Other organizations have somebody to whom they could turn to. That's not the head of their department.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, uh, we do have, uh, in the event that an employee, for instance, wants to complain about the department. And there is a procedure where his, his or her department, this procedure where they go to the borough administrator or someone else other than the person they want to complain about. And we do also have, every year, we appoint a female to be the person to whom um. Female sexual harassment issues are, you know, an issue, and a male for the same, so we do have that in place, if you will.
Yes, I know we do, yeah. There, there's plenty of places the employees can go if, if they don't think that they're getting a fair shake from their department heads.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like what, what Linda's requesting is like, like, sort of like an ombudsman, right? And, and do we, is that, is that the right term?
The, the, I, I didn't hear the term, uh, Tom.
I like an ombudsman, like somebody they can go to outside of their chain of command where they voice their concerns. Uh, and make sure there's no allegation or, or whatever.
We, we have, we have our employee manual that explains exactly that, about what, what, what to do if they're being treated unfairly by their department head. So it's, it's spelled out in the, in, in the employee handbook of exactly what you have to do.
Okay, so we already have that in place, right?
Yes, yes, we do.
Great. Thank you.
Denise, go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name's Denise Cusmano. My address is two two seven five Hill Road, Scotch Plains, New Jersey. In the twenty-ten census, do you know the percentage of rental properties versus owner occupied properties? And in twenty-twenty, how do you think those percentages changed?
I have no idea, I haven't seen the results of the twenty-twenty census.
Is anybody on the board part of, were they around, were doing any municipal work back in twenty-ten? And would have an understanding of what went on back then?
I'm sure once we get the results, we'll be able to, to analyze it.
Um, have you seen any impact on income? If maybe the income could be a um, a barometer?
Well, I believe if we check with code enforcement, we probably have less of the group rentals than we have in twenty-ten. Because I know they've been going down every year, but that's, uh, I'd have to check with code enforcement.
Um, do you identify group rentals as year-round rentals?
No, those summer rentals.
Okay, so my question again is regarding rental properties, which are all-inclusive. Versus owner occupied properties and the shakeout in twenty-twenty.
So the best I could tell you is you'd have to contact our code enforcement or business administrator to get you the answers uh, to those questions. I don't have them in front of me.
Um, do rental properties have to file a lease, whether it's a year-round or a seasonal?
Uh, no, they don't.
Okay, no leases are filed?
No leases are filed, no. There was actually a court uh, decision on that.
Okay. Is there some way to come back to the next meeting and ask that question? Has the government told you when they're gonna give you the twenty-twenty results?
I, I mean, you know, the best thing is, is to call our business administrator or to call the code enforcement office. They, they will give you the, the difference in rentals between two thousand ten and two thousand twenty. Uh, as far as you're talking about the census, uh, I'm sure that's not gonna be compiled for a little while, it won't be before the next meeting.
The cen, the census is either still going or just recently.
Yeah, just recently ended, but we won't get results for that.
At best, the results would be perhaps March of next year, at best.
Yeah.
Because they were asking in the census, um, you know, whether you lived on the property as of April one. And whether it was seasonal or you rented and you, um, you weren't there or whatever. I mean, there were a lot of questions around rentals and I, I'm trying to get a barometer on how that may have changed.
Yeah, I'm not sure, so we'll have to wait for that, that result to come out and, and look at it.
Thank you. No, I don't.
Go ahead, state your name and address, please.
Nita?
Nita, can you hear us? If you can't hear us, you're probably gonna have to call in. Go ahead.
Hi, Jerry Buckafusko, four oh nine fifty Avenue. Uh, just three quick things um, to Councilman Tarveli, Carveli, I've read about the consent agenda. Just look at section two seven B of the, of the ordinances and read the first sentence focusing on. Uh, unanimous, unanimously determined to be routine, and I think you'll see where I'm coming from, okay? Uh, the other two things, uh, you, you talked about civil service. Did they give you any um, direction on the confidential assistant title that Mr. Heisman uh, is currently under?
Uh, yes, we'll be removing that.
Okay, and um. The, the, the last thing was at the last meeting, you, you know, advised us that Mr. Campbell retired. I have his uh, his email that he sent on September twenty-eighth. Noticing his intention to retire and he says he started using my time on the books as of this date. Do we have an actual date that he's going to be retired and they'll cease being on the town's payroll?
Uh, I don't have that in front of me, I, I'm sure uh, our HR department does.
Okay, because I was just curious as to what kind of time he's taking uh, and how long it's gonna be, but I guess I can Oprah that request.
Well, whatever is in his contract and whatever time he has, I know, I know he didn't take any time over the summer or during this whole pandemic. So whatever time he has accrued, uh, it's entitled to him under the contract.
Okay, I was just curious as to the actual retirement date, though, but.
I can't tell you that, I'd have to check with HR.
Okay, thank you.
That's Sherry.
Yes, name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you.
Harry Russo, 1218 Briarwood Road in Belmar. Two things, one was just a quick, Mr. Brennan said that the benefit was Jackie at Bari last weekend. It's actually this coming up weekend.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for correcting.
I just wanted to touch upon that. And so people knew that, you know, it's this Sunday, October 25 from 2 to 5 p.m. And, you know, I know that we all feel for that family. The other thing I'm calling in about is, as you all know, over and over again, I'm a block captain. And just over my block captain zone, there is a fire hydrant. That has been pouring water out of it for a long time. And I'm sure, as you remember from last meeting, that, you know, I have a problem with the way. The water bill is. So number one, I believe that I'm correct in saying. That as the waters running out of the fire hydrant, that means that we. As residents are responsible for paying for that water.
You tell me exactly where that fire hydrant is?
It's on 16th and Main.
Okay, we're gonna have DPW check that.
All right, it was actually called in, I was told. A resident told me that it was called in and that. Well, I don't know, I'm.
Well, we're gonna check it tomorrow morning, that's for sure.
Kershobam's shaking his head that no, the resident didn't call it in, but the resident told me that.
Okay, well, either here or there, we're gonna make sure we check it tomorrow morning.
Recording the information, it's not in front of.
Yeah, we're gonna check it tomorrow morning.
All right, and on something like that, my other question is, what would normally be done with that? Like, you know, that's over my line of me being a block captain. The other block captain didn't catch it, nobody caught it. And so what's the check and balance on that?
Well, we'll have DPW check it tomorrow morning. We'll have our water department check it. And if it needs to be repaired, it's gonna do, it'll be right away.
Yeah, no, I don't mean like that. I mean, you know, like maybe there's a hydrant on Fifth running also. Like, is there a procedure that that's supposed to be somebody's thing? Is it a block captain thing? Is it a?
Well, normally, if any of the police officers during their patrol see anything like that, they report it. If any of our DPW workers see anything like that, they report it. Or residents, sometimes, you know, if it's not caught and they see water coming out of the street. You know, if they call in right away, we don't want that to happen because it could undermine the street. So we want, we want to check that right away because if it is leaking, it could become a major problem. And we want to stop it before that happens.
Yeah, the rest.
Is it Lake Como or is it Belmar, do you know?
I'm pretty sure it's Belmar. It's right where the corner 16th and Main on the Little Red Barn. Is that the name of the package store there?
Yeah, we'll check it that first thing in the morning.
On that side right there. I believe that is Belmar in that way.
Okay, thank you for that.
Doesn't DPW, okay, so maybe I don't really know, but DPW flushes the hydrants when they, when they switch from. The, from pumps to New Jersey American Water. So, you know, they're obviously looking at the hydrants at that point. Do the fire departments, I remember when I was volunteering with Belmar, we used to check the hydrants every once in a while. Make sure we knew where they were and whatnot. So does the fire department look at the hydrants?
Yeah, they check. Yeah, yeah, they check pressures and we have a couple different departments that check to make sure. They're all operational, but if anybody ever sees anything leaking out of the road. Hopefully that they'll either call into the police department or DPW or business administrator so we can straighten that out right away.
Is Sherry still on?
I'm here.
Yeah, now, so is it, is it bubbling up from the road or is it coming out?
Yeah, there's like a top on the fire hydrant and there's like two things on the side, you know what I mean? So the water's coming out of both of them. I took a video of it when I was there. And then the water's like, there's like grass around it, you know, between the sidewalk and the street. And that is kind of like a little pool there, do you know, around the hydrant because the water just keeps flowing and flowing. I'm assuming it happened, as you talked about, when they switched the water over and perhaps it wasn't tightened down enough, I'm guessing. I mean, I don't know, I'm taking a guess here, but yeah.
Thanks for reporting it, we'll get it working.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if there was something that, you know, you know, like all the block captains should look out for it or whatever, you know.
Well, if, if any of the, any of the community policing personnel see that or any of the residents that are involved in the community policing program. Absolutely either email your police officer or call it in so that we could straighten that out right away.
Yeah, when the person told me about it on Sunday, that he had said to me that he had called it in already. And he said nothing was done about it. And I said, oh, council meeting's coming up. I will speak on it and I'm sure somebody will have the answer for me. So.
Please don't wait till council meeting, call it in, even if you do.
And I didn't know what to do then, you know, I didn't want to say, you know, keep calling, you know, if I don't want to annoy the police, that's for sure. And so, you know, I like the police, I like the DPW, and so, you know, I'm sure they're very busy also.
Yes, but that's something we want to take care of right away. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you.
Yep, Mark Pfeifer, 319 Fifth Avenue.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you, Mayor. I actually went to recycle last week and I did see the redone basketball courts. Which look really great. So of course, my thoughts turned to McCleary Park. So I think it's also great that you want to redo the tennis courts and add pickleball courts, you know, there also. I did just want to mention that, you know, unless you play pickleball, you do want to have dedicated tennis courts and dedicated pickleball courts. Because the net is different size. I just wanted to point that out.
Yes, well, that's the people that resurfaced or told us that, that they're going to dedicate pickleball, two pickleball courts and two tennis courts. So that's going to be done and we're working on that.
That's terrific. I think that's great. The second thing I have is I think it's the Shade Tree Commission. I think was being involved in this where they're making a list of trees around the neighborhood. Where you have hanging branches that are in a dangerous situation. I just wanted to see is there a list of those trees that need to be pruned? That have the dangerous branches hanging, this way the public could possibly add to that. Like from just walking around town, I see different trees, but I just want to be sure if we're doing it. Will there be a list the public can add certain trees to it?
Well, if you, if you do make a list, maybe you can either email or call the business administrator. And he'll make sure he gets, gets either the DPW or the Shade Tree Commission so we can start, you know, working on that. So if you, if you are walking around town or if anybody's walking around town and you see those type of things. If you could just send it over to our business administrator and we'll get working on that.
Great, I would send that to Ed. Thank you.
Thank you. Si, go ahead.
Hey, how's it going? I'm going to dovetail back on what Mark just said. It was actually my second thing and that is, has there been any feedback from the Shade Commission volunteers? To assess the tree situation in town? I mean, I respect that, you know, you know, you guys have gone around with these trees that are out of control or these plants that are out of control. But, you know, on the north end of town, you know, we have some trees that have been beat up pretty bad with the weather lately. And I agree with Mark that there's, you know, some hazardous situation and they're town trees. So I just wanted to see if there was any kind of update, but recognizing the fact that Councilman Cracklin isn't around tonight. You know, but if we can have a feedback, maybe at the next council meeting, that would be terrific.
Yes, and so like I said to Mark, if you do see them, you know, email our business administrator so that, you know, they can go on a list. And we could have DPW or the Shade Tree Commission take a look at them. If they are hazardous, we want to get them down.
All right, terrific. And there's also a lot of like dead branches as well. And again, you know, we've had this debate over the years that, you know, it's a town tree. But, you know, there's a lot of dead branches that ultimately are going to wind up being a hazardous situation. So if there's anything the town can do to prevent that from happening, it would be greatly appreciated. One thing that hasn't been mentioned tonight, you know, that I think needs to be mentioned, and that is the fact that. It's great to see that the benches are back on the boardwalk again. You know, you know, that was probably, you know, it made a lot, and Mark, you know me, you know.
I'm waiting for the bikes, so.
I'm on, I'm on the board. I'm on the boardwalk, you know, but the idea is that when I was riding today, you know, it was nice to see. That the benches were back on the boardwalk and that, you know, people were sitting there and they were enjoying themselves. And accolades go out to DPW, you know, for their efforts and putting them back on the boardwalk again. And I think it was a great decision that was made. While we're on the topic of DPW, the one thing that I just want to, you know, kind of throw out there is that. You know, I know the DPW has been involved in the recycling for this year. And I think they've done a yeoman's job. But the question is, at some point in time, are we going to get like some kind of comparison? You know, 2019 versus 2020? Because the whole purpose of going into the town resuming the recycling was it was going to be more cost effective. So as a part of that audit, are we going to see numbers that, you know, actually. You know, legit, you know, in a legitimate way, you know, confirm the fact that it was the way to go. You know, that, you know, because the one thing I can say is this, that, you know. You know, it must on a Monday to do the town with recycling and must involve a lot of, you know, people, a lot of labor. And, and what else, you know, is sacrificed as a result of that dedication? So if we can see what the pure numbers are at some point in time, I think that would be very helpful. For the town or for this, you know, the community to support the fact that that was the right decision.
Yeah, I need your end report, you know, I obviously want to see what the difference is myself. So, yeah, we'll have that.
All right, all right, so that's it. And as far as the, at the last council meeting or maybe it was the council meeting before. You know, we had all said that, you know, despite the fact that we're involved in this COVID-19. You know, that, you know, the beach income this season was terrific. And that, you know, it kind of surpassed years in the past. Is there a plan set in, in place in terms of where that additional income is going to be spent?
Yeah, we'll put some in the surplus, but I know two of the bathrooms have to be replaced. So we're looking at, you know, the, between the Mobi mats that are expensive and two bathrooms and a couple of things that we need down the beach. Plus, we'll put some in the surplus because the surplus was really depleted. And in case we have a rainy summer one of these years, which I'm sure is going to happen. That we have enough to cover, cover the summer. So our financial team is really taking a look at that.
All right, so down the road, we're going to see some kind of comparison in terms of what we bought in this year versus 2019 and years prior to. And what the, where the surplus is going to be either held and or allocated?
Well, it'll be definitely held in the beach utility and it's only that you want to keep a little bit of surplus in there, which we, we haven't had for past couple of years. Just in case we have a rainy season and we have the backup for it.
Terrific. Okay, thanks for your time tonight, guys.
All right, thanks.
Have a good night.
Hi, everybody.
Yes, Linda.
Linda Sharkis, Fourth Avenue.
Yes.
A couple of comments and questions, one question. How is the basketball court resurfacing free? Could you address that? My mother told me nothing and life is free, so.
Well, it was done because the. JCPN L went in there and filled cracks and they messed up our basketball court. So they had to come in there and straighten it out. And during the process, we got them to resurface the basketball courts for free.
Oh, beautiful thing. My, thank you. My second comment is, somebody asked when Mr. Campbell is retiring. According to your employee manual, for every month you work, you, you. Receive one extra vacation day. So is there a final date? So he's not accruing more vacation as he's taking vacation time?
That's for a brand new employee. He's under contract. He's been here for 13 years, so it's totally different. The part that you're reading in there is for a brand new employee that occurs one vacation day for every month that they work.
This actually talks about retire, this, may I please, this talks, this is in the retirement section. And it also talks about sick pay is paid out at halftime if you're retire, retiring. Is that the case with Mr. Campbell?
Well, the case with Mr. Campbell, yes, I think all employees are, if they cure, cure, a cure. Sick time, it's paid out at half the rate.
Okay.
Mr. Sharkis, your first question, Mr. Campbell is not accumulating new vacation or sick time because he's not working, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sharon, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Sharon Russell, 11th Avenue in Belmar. How is everyone?
Hi, Sharon.
A couple of things, I wanted to just help promote the Belmar Library, even though we're not officially open. We do have curbside service as well as several things on the virtual library, including mail instruction video from the Monmouth County Board of Elections. So it's nonpartisan. And there's a lot of things that people can check out by going onto the website, which is belmarlibrary.org. And checking out the virtual library. So that was one thing that I wanted to bring up. The second thing is, I think the jumping for Jackie is this Sunday. And I think they're still taking donations as well as gift donations because they're having a gift auction. So I just wanted to bring that up, that it is this coming Sunday at Bari. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Can you hear?
Yes, Maria, go ahead.
Hi, this is Maria, 1246 Pine Tree Way. How are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good. I wanted to follow up, I had attended, as did many other residents, the Hines family that offered. A gathering and education and awareness about autism and people in the disabled community. And I wanted to, and this kind of dovetails with what Linda was talking about, about boosting our HR or having an outside advocate for our workers. Are we scheduling as the borough, any workshops or trainings, reporting trainings? Any kind of better education or awareness to protect our community with workforce? Who have.
Yes, we are. Yes, it's set up. We have training all year long.
And when will that happen? Is it anything new considering that this is?
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we, I think we have on the job harassment. I'm asking Mr. Kershobam, maybe you can explain it, but we have training all year long. It's mandatory training that we have.
But this was mandatory training that hasn't changed, right? I'm talking about something.
Updates, it's all updates on everything that happens because of different court cases that happen during a year. So anything that happens as far as what our employees, it's up to our, we have to do it. For insurance purposes and there's a lot of different mandates that the employees have to go through to go to do training, but.
I was gonna ask, doesn't the GIF require a certain amount of?
Yes, that's, the GIF requires a lot. There's a lot that goes on, but if business administrator Kershobam could, probably could explain it better than I can.
Yes, there's online courses that we have talked to the GIF in the past week or so that we keep updating our training all year long. So that's taking place now. It's going to be borough wide for all our employees to also. They have to go online or they have to sign up and then we have to make. So we're in the process of that. Iterated what the employee handbook says in regards to work environment and employee code of conduct. They all got, everybody got issued a new employee handbook and we make sure that everything's up to speed, so we're on it.
Pete, I also think that not, in addition to the regular training that the police department has for you know, normal police business, I think now they all have to have a sensitivity training, I think.
Yeah, we have to have our yearly training as well.
I suppose, I mean, I worked for a county before where I've had online courses and in-person courses and I think it's much more meaningful when you go department by department to really discuss what the, the dynamics of each department are and how we can best support all of the employees within each department.
That's what we're doing.
I'd love for Belmar to consider doing that throughout the entire, all of their departments, being that we want to make sure that we're the best community as far as hiring those with disabilities.
We're doing it for everyone. We do that now.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead. Anita, are you there? Anita, if you could hear us, we might have to call in by phone. We can't hear.
Terry Russo, 1218 Briarwood Road in Belmar. Someone, a resident just texted me and asked if I could ask, when are in-person council meetings coming back?
I was hoping really soon, but because of the size of our council chambers, I think we're only allowed to have, is it 40? 40 besides the council and everybody that we have to have here. So on our Zoom meetings, we have a lot more than that. And I don't want to cut anybody out, so until we're allowed to have more people in council chambers, we'll be continuing with Zoom. But I'm with you, I'd rather have in-person, I'd rather have that, but we have to go with the state guidelines are and right now I think we're only allowed 40, but with the amount of people that come on the Zoom, we're way over that.
All right, thank you very much. I'll relay the message. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We still can't hear you. You can email in your comment or try calling in.
Okay. Anita, if you have, if you could hear us and you have any questions, if you can call our business administrator or email them and we'll try to get your questions answered. We, I don't know what the problem is, but we keep clicking on you, but we can't, somewhere along the line, there's a problem.
Can I have a motion to close the public session and adjourn the meeting?
Motion? Second.
On favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for tuning in.